We'll call this meeting to order the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for July 5th, 2022. Roll call, Mr. Buder.
Leyland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Treelka?
Here.
White?
Here. Have a moment of silence and reflect on our actions of the day.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received as proposed or as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moving to second. Any discussion on anything? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Public comments? Anybody out in the audience? Got any public comments before we get started or online? Seeing none, moving on to years of service awards. Grant?
We have one. Years of service award for today. It's for Lionel Braun from the Sheriff's Office for thirty-five years of service.
Thank Lionel for his years of service, Tony.
Absolutely.
Moving on to claims and payments. Mr. Perry?
This week's expenditures total three hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-four cents. Secondary roads makes up one hundred and forty-five thousand, eighty-nine dollars. Sheriff's Department seventy-three thousand, six ninety-five. IT twenty-eight thousand, nine sixty-eight. And finally, general assistance forty-nine thousand, seven thirteen. Everything is normal.
Thank you, James.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moving to second. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treelka?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Next is project updates from department heads and elected officials. Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. I wanted to introduce our summer intern this summer. Her name is Hannah Carey. She's here with us. She's been here about a month now. She is currently or will be a sophomore at Iowa State University, majoring in civil engineering. And she's also a graduate of East High here in Waterloo. So we brought her along just to give her a little taste of what goes on at the board meetings. And I just have a few slides I wanted to show you this morning of paving. Okay, so last Thursday was Aspro placed the first asphalt on Grundy Road, so this is a pretty historic day. It's been in the works for many years, as we've heard over the years. So they began placing asphalt. This was right at the north portion, right up against the highway, the concrete coming off of the Highway 20 overpass. This is several hours later, looking to the north, you can see the Highway 20 overpass there. First lift of asphalt is four and a half inches thick. So this is a lot of the asphalt associated with this project. About fifty-five percent of the asphalt is in this first lift of asphalt. It's four and a half inches thick. They will be, they worked on it one day last week, and then they had problems with the plant. So they are continuing. It will take the rest of this week and possibly Monday or Tuesday of next week, just depending on production with the really hot temperatures this week. We'll see how it goes. They do anticipate that all the asphalt will be placed by September. They have other work. Aspro has other projects, of course, so they're trying to get that worked in with this project. We are waiting for the last lift of asphalt to be placed until our silt fences can come out. So that's the, all the erosion control we have on the project. We'd really like to get a good growth of grass and then be able to remove those fences so that we're not having heavy equipment drive on the brand-new asphalt to remove the silt fences. So we're hoping to get that done before the final lift of asphalt is placed, but we'll see how that goes. In other work last week, this is our concrete bridge proj, our bridge project on Cedar Wapsie Road, C-57. Our contractor was pouring the concrete approaches last Thursday and Friday. Hannah was out there assisting with that work and just a few slides showing the work to place those concrete approaches. And that is my update. Can I answer any questions for you?
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads or elected officials? Hearing none. Moving on to minutes approved for June 28th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Moving to second. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consent or deny by resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moving to second. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treelka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is contracts and agreement. This is a resolution at the engagement letter between Blackhawk County and Clifton Larson Allen LLP, Cedar Rapids, Iowa, for auditing services for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022 in the amount of eighty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Be approved as direct to chair to sign for same as recommended by James Perry, Finance Director.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Anything you'd like to add, James?
I did just want to let everybody know that this is the sixth and final year of their extension for the contract. So it looks like we'll start bidding, or start working on the bidding process in March and April. So I did just want to make the board aware of that.
Thank you, James.
Is that date correct, James?
Yes.
Any further questions? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treelka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution at the contract extension between Blackhawk County and Waste Management for waste removal services at the courthouse, Pinecrest Conservation and Jail with a term of two years, July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2024, at a cost of two hundred and thirty, two thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents per month. Be approved. Direct to chair to sign for same as recommended by Rory Givin, Maintenance Superintendent. Rory?
Good morning, Board. Rory Givin, Maintenance Superintendent. This is a two-year extension to our waste pickups. Just to give you a little back history here, that does equate to about fifteen pickups a week, spread out amongst the courthouse, the Pinecrest facility, Juvenile Court Services, and the Blackhawk County Jail. That does equate to approximately a four hundred and eighty-five dollar increase, which breaks out to approximately thirty dollars per pickup. When looking at whether or not making a recommendation to extend this for the two-year option, which was noted in the original contract, we did factor in what the previous bids were three years ago. And even at the twenty-three, twenty-seven, which is the new amount, we're still under what the three bids were back in two thousand and nineteen. I feel given just the rising cost in, particularly in fuel and other goods, that this isn't a reasonable request. And so my recommendation is that we extend this for an additional two years.
Thank you. Any questions?
Motion to approve?
You indicated in your email, they said this was a surtax increase due to the increasing gas.
That's not exactly what they indicated. In my discussions with Waste Management, that was one of the key factors that they indicated to us for the rising cost. But it's not necessarily classified as a fuel surcharge, even though that's what we did indicate it as. That was just our primary topic of conversation at the time.
So it's not really reflects the gas cost. It's just an increase in contract?
Correct. It's all encompassed with the cost of goods, and fuel is obviously a big part of that. Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rory. This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Yeah, I made the motion. I don't know if there was a second.
Second.
Treelka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Other business. This is a resolution at the IRS Form 720 to remit payment of one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-six cents for the county's patient-centered opcoms research institute fee for the 2020, 2021 plan year as required by the Affordable Care Act. Be approved and direct to chair to sign for same as recommended by Stacy Wandersheid, Perspective Consulting.
Second.
Moving to second. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treelka?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution that the following speed zones for Pointer Road be established and appropriate signs be erected at the location described as follows. Remove speed zone ninety-four and add speed zone one oh nine. Shrock Road, also known D-35 eastbound from a point four hundred feet east of intersection with Bonnie Boulevard, sixteen hundred and fifteen feet eastward to the Blackhawk County line, approximately one thousand, six hundred and fifteen feet. Kathy?
Yeah, I should say that, that should say the following speed zones for Shrock Road, not Pointer Road. I don't know if that, the resolution itself is fine. But this comes to us from a request from the Public Works Director in the city of Hudson. We did coordinate with Deputy Herbst on this, this proposed speed limit. This would, if you're familiar with Hudson, this would extend this, the thirty-five mile an hour speed limit out to the city limits, which encompasses the area where their ball fields are, just to the north of Shrock Road. So they are seeing more increased traffic on that roadway, and they are requesting that we slow the traffic down.
Thank you, Kathy.
I'll make a motion that this be established on Shrock Road.
Second.
Moving to second. Any further discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treelka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution at the following speed zones for Grundy Road be established and appropriate signs be erected at the location described as follows. Add speed zone number one ten at fifty-five miles per hour. Grundy Ronos, also known as Key 69, starting at the intersection of Ridgeway, Ridgeway Avenue and Grundy Road in south, approximately five and a half miles to the intersection of Zeneta Road and Grundy Road.
Kathy?
Yeah, so as you know, this was, Grundy Road was gravel road. By law, the speed limit was fifty-five miles an hour during the day and fifty miles an hour at night. We are now changing it formally to fifty-five miles an hour since we are paving it. We did coordinate again with Deputy Herbst on this speed limit proposal. Grundy County has submitted this to their board as well, so these should be done in conjunction. And then when the road is finished paving, we will establish those, erect those fifty-five mile an hour speed limit signs.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treelka?
Do we have a motion?
No.
So moved, moved to approve?
Second.
Moving to second. This is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treelka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at nine oh five, Tuesday, July 12th, 2022, in Boardroom 201 at Blackhawk County Courthouse for proposed ordinance seventy-seven dash two six seven from a request submitted by Scott Tarhoun at west of fifty-six twenty-four Street or Road to rezone two point eight nine acres from A Agricultural to AR Agricultural Residential in order to construct one single family home.
Second.
Moving to second. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is a resolution, direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at nine oh seven on Tuesday, July 12th, 2022, in Boardroom 201, Blackhawk County Courthouse on proposed ordinance number seventy-seven dash two six eight from a request from Janice Miller at seventy-six seventy-six Wagner Road to rezone one point nine four acres from A Agricultural to AR Agricultural Residential to direct a, construct a new single-family home.
So moved.
I'll second that. I did have a question. Is there a reason for a motion for the first one and a resolution for the second, or just we're okay either way? So.
I don't know why it was written that way. There's no requirement for it to be a resolution.
Okay.
But it doesn't hurt anything.
Okay.
Thank you, Grant.
Thank you.
So this is a resolution. Please answer your name as called.
Treelka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, discussion, possible board action. This is a funding request from Iowa Community Attraction and Tourism, CAT grant match from Blackhawk or Waterloo Leisure Services. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Al showed me how to do this, but I think I'm going to get it. Nope.
He's usually close.
We've already got that taken care of.
I knew that Al was going to have to coach me. Okay. I'm over here. And the silence is deafening. Okay. I'm not going to go through this entire presentation because it takes quite a while, but I want to thank you for, I sent Chairman White a letter. We're asking for, for your partnership and support in a big project that we're doing in a couple of our major parks in Waterloo. With me today is Tom Powers, Leisure Services Commissioner. He's been on the road with me seeking money from every crack and crevice we can find it. This is about a sixteen million dollar project. Today, we are counting twelve million raised so far. That's six and a half million from Blackhawk County Gaming Association, which is by far the largest amount. We have four and a half million plugged into the CIP program. Both of those are over five years. We also have a million dollars awarded by McRoy Trust. That's on the council agenda tonight for approval, a contract with them for a million dollars over five years. We also have requests in to Otto Schuetz Foundation for a million, Van G Miller Family Charitable Foundation. We've requested one million. We also then, which brings me, why I'm here today, we have a CAT grant possibility of up to a million. So we'll be requesting a million, and this is probably not news to you, but we need to come to you as the supervisors and ask for your partnership. My letter states a request of fifty thousand dollars. I'm not sure that's set in stone. Based on the last time I came before you, a few years ago, we ended up with twenty thousand on about a million dollar project and that. We started with ten, and then Vision Iowa Board said, um, let's, why don't you go back and ask for another ten? So they do not give hard and fast guidelines. But a little bit about the project. This is all coming about because our pools at both Parks, Gates, and Burns are failing. We actually lost a complete season at Burns Park a couple of years ago. Both of them have water in them today, but both of them are leaking. They're forty-two years old. They're aluminum shell construction, and the gutters are corroded, and they, they just have a whole, a whole variety of problems. So we did an aquatics master plan, which ended up in a very deep look into what we really needed most at these two parks. And we had a, a committee, a group from the Gates Park neighborhood who got together and basically said, if we can spend eight million, and we're talking about eight million at each park, Burns and Gates, if we can spend eight million, here are a whole list of things that we'd like. And there were many things other than just a pool. So at Gates, the intent is to build a new spray pad and a variety of other, other resources there. And I guess I can try to, this is the aquatics master plan. I'm trying to be quick here. These are some nice pictures of Burns' existing conditions. Two thousand and nineteen, we lost the pool entirely. The main drain failed and so on and so on. Gates is pretty much the same thing. This is a public input process. I do want to stress, we've had almost exhaustive public input. This kind of outlines everything. But back to my, where I was in the presentation, we do have a group that is really representing the Gates Park group. And they came up with a, just a whole variety of things that might be possible there. And Felicia Smith-Nalls, you may know, used to work for the city, but now is with Tyson, has been very instrumental in that. And so you see the focus group members there. And you have this presentation. You can look at it at your leisure later, but I'm going to go through this very quickly, and I wanted to get to Gates Park. Here's an overview of Gates Park. Donald Street to the north, the upper part of your image there. The old Chamberlain prop, well, there's a soccer field between, and then the Chamberlain property as you move south. And then on the, the far southern tip of this is the Lester Street, which people have known over the years as Little Gates, and the golf course, of course, to the east there. So there are a whole variety of things planned for that entire space. This kind of shows a multi-court basketball facility with an amphitheater, the spray pad, as I mentioned. These are just concepts. Another concept of the amphitheater. Again, amphitheater, basketball courts, three courts, lighted with a skating rink around the edge, which skating was really kind of high on the priority list, roller skating. Kind of a view of the, the at-grade. Then inclusive playground is a big part of this. We had a, a move to put an inclusive playground at Edison. That's another story. It's not going to go there, but we're going to have an inclusive playground here. Approximately a million dollar project in itself. If anyone's familiar with a place to play in Cedar Falls, it's very, very active and very popular to the point of they're happy to hear that we're going to build one as well because it's, it's kind of overused. But this will be Waterloo's first truly inclusive playground, so we're excited about that. Spray pad, these are just some of the features in the inclusive playground. Chamberlain property is an interesting case. You're probably all aware that's been a brownfield site that's had a lot of cleanup done. It's being cleaned up to residential standards. Honestly, I'm not sure if this is going to fit in the whole timeline, which we're planning on breaking ground this fall at Gates Park, and then working through the fall, winter as we can, and into spring of next year for the Gates part of the project. There is some additional cleanup that needs to be done there, but this is slated to be, there's a paved trail between the two parts of the park there. And then there's also pollinator fields and sculpture garden. And the sculpture garden is being worked on with Waterloo Center for the Arts and neighborhood. And that's kind of a separate project, but we'll be creating the space for it. One thing you'll notice is a lot of sculpting of the property. There's a lot of fill being brought in, and that's all happening because we're going to bring the Gates Pool Hill, as you know it now, pretty much down to grade, and there'll be a lot of fill there. It'll have an interesting bermed look. Large trees will be left alone. And then that fill will come into this, this area at the old Chamberlain plant to make it, give it some topography. This is a soccer field, very well-used soccer field, not in very good shape. That will be completely renovated. New parking throughout. And this is Lester Street, which is the, the southern end of the project. Again, Little Gates, quite a bit planned here. It's kind of a, an area that's, well, here, here you go. That'll sit and tell you everything you need to know. It's a little bit forlorn looking. There's a nice new flood wall there. It's not particularly attractive. You can't see the oak groves down below. All you can see is a, kind of a ugly flood wall. It's there for a very good reason. It's there to keep people's properties out of the floodway, out of the flood plain, so they don't have to pay flood insurance. That's kind of the, the artist's rendering of how it can look when we're done with this project. I haven't talked much about Burns Pool yet. This is a concept. We're just in the planning phases with it now. That gives you an idea. We'll have a, a first-class aquatic facility there that will meet all of our swim lesson needs and recreational needs. Keep in mind, we did add a few years back a new indoor pool at the Sportsplex. So with those two pools, we think our aquatics needs will be well met. Another concept there. So we're thinking that with all the public input, we're making some major improvements to our two kind of major parks in Waterloo and, and very excited about it. I didn't mention Make-A-Splash is, this rendering was done by an artist at Center for the Arts. We're doing a grassroots fundraising as well, and that's coming through the Waterloo Community Foundation. We're about to launch that very soon. So I tried to be fast. I'll take questions. Thanks. Requesting fifty thousand dollars again. That's my best guess, which I've never gone to someone and said, that's my best guess. It's kind of weird, but that's, that's the way the, the grant operates.
And your timeline for submitting this is?
Oh, the, the grant is due July fifteenth, so the timeline is short. If we don't make that deadline, I could do another, there's another deadline right around the first of the year, but it would be good for our fundraising efforts to keep it moving forward if we could.
So if we were to approve something, you'd still be able to make that timeline?
Definitely.
Okay.
Actually, if you were to approve it this week, it'd be great, even next week, because it's due the fifteenth.
Go ahead, Dan.
Paul, the process for somebody outside the city of Waterloo to use any of these facilities is pretty simple, correct?
It is. They're all open to the public, most free and open to the public. The, the Aquatic Center, of course, will have a, a fee. But the spray pad at Gates and all the features, I went through very quickly. At Gates, we'll all be free and open to the public. We expect that there will be people coming in from, throughout the county and beyond because of some of the, the draw of some, some pretty special features at Gates. Burns will be a nice aquatic facility. I think that'll meet mostly our internal Cedar Valley needs. I don't, I don't see that as a tourist attract, attraction, but definitely available to the public.
And you've been doing this a long time.
Forty-two years. I started the year the pools built. You know, I'm crumbling too.
The point, I guess I may use your very, you're familiar in navigating what's necessary to acquire these grants.
I hope so. So far, so good. Thank you.
So the last request that you made of us for a CAT grant, was that back at the Marx Park?
That's the last one. I came before you. Now, I, I believe there was a request. I know there was a request for the Sportsplex, but that was Waterloo Development Corporation. I was here with them, but they made the request.
Thank you.
Paul, I got a couple of questions for you. Is there any plans in the near future for another shoot of ice here in Blackhawk County for the, the, a number of kids that want to play hockey and are unable to play, or if they do get a chance, it's late at night and stuff?
Sure.
And the second part of it is Waterloo Memorial Stadium, or Waterloo Buck Stadium, could use some real TLC?
It could. Both of those are things that are ongoing discussion. They're not part of this project that I'm deploying with today. WDC has had a number of plans over the years, and I think there are still some discussions going on about a freestanding facility that could include, could include ice. And Harry's been involved in some of those discussions as well. There's nothing I can today tell you that, that is ready to go. What was this, there was the ice, and what was the second one? The stadium?
Stadium.
We've put about two million dollars in that stadium over the last fifteen years or so. I don't dispute that. It needs TLC. All you have to do is sit in the stands and look at the holes and rusty holes. Nineteen forty-six.
Or when they're having fireworks, you can see.
Exactly.
Through the holes.
So you'll see this summer that there is some welding being done
Okay.
to patch that, and I'm going to emphasize "patch" because that's what it is. We do have a plan to completely redo those stands, possibly with an aluminum freestanding overlay over the top. But a lot of the investment we put in there, you can't see it's under those stands. It's the locker rooms and the concession area. So.
You can see that though, too.
Yeah.
That, that was good improvement. Thank you.
Sure. I have questions for James. I have questions for James. James, where would we get this funding from?
Well, what we'd do is, we, we obviously didn't budget for this, so we would just, whatever earmark, we would just include on the budget amendment. So, I would say that we would pull from fund balance, and that would be something that we can do. When we do set it up for the budget amendment, I will just indicate that, you know, if, if, let's say we do meet the 50,000, then I would just indicate that we would pull 50,000, increase that expenditure, but that would come from fund balance.
And we have enough in fund balance to pursue an opportunity like this?
Yes. Whatever, whatever you want to put forth, we can, we can adjust on the amendment, it really won't be any budget.
James, I was, had a discussion with Paul on this last week, he indicated that we're probably talking fiscal year '24 money, so therefore the board will be going through a budget process. We can include that in, if the board chooses to, because they got to apply for the grant and so forth. So, you're really talking FY '24 money.
So, then if it's FY '24 money, then during the budget sessions coming up, earlier, or in early January, then we'll just indicate that we'll need to increase expenditures, but then, again, we'll, we'll offset it by fund balance, so that way we won't tax for it.
So, for now, you'd need the resolution and a commitment from us?
Correct, correct. And I, I don't think I really finished with the timeline for the entire project. The plan is to start with Gates this fall, but then remove the Burns Pool the following fall. So, and then that would be constructed in, in the fall of '23. So, we hope to have the project entirely done by summer, probably midsummer, hopefully in time for pool opening of '24. So, if that, summer of '24 gives you an idea. We would need to have the project closed out sometime that summer.
I'll make a motion to allocate $50,000 for this venture.
Second?
I'd like to add, I'd like to add to that motion, it's a tradition for the county to put a stipulation that the county's contribution is only if they receive the grant.
Yes.
Definitely. That, that's understood, thank you.
That should be part of the resolution.
Thank you.
I agree.
Great to see both these.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Felka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Liddell?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work.
Have a good day.
Yeah, great project.
Next is discussion, possible board action on a procedure for agenda request.
Well, thank you, Board, for, like I say, allowing this time today just to have this discussion. I think everybody has a copy of this draft of an inter-office memo on their desk, and I did earlier send the, a copy of it, excuse me, to Tom and to Chris, so hopefully they have a chance to have it in front of them as well. And it probably would have been a good time to discuss this, I guess a few weeks ago, when we changed the timeline for submitting agenda items, but I don't see any reason why we can't do it now. Quite honestly, we're not really changing much of the procedure as we look through it, or if anyone reads, wants to read through it. The item, the things that we have listed, and I'll do it just briefly, I'll try to be real brief. The department heads and elected officials will send agenda item requests to the Board of Supervisors, preferably using email, with an explanation of the request, and include any necessary attachments. And we currently do that now. The administrative aide and the finance director should be copied in the request made to the Board. Others to be copied will be determined by the individual submitting the request, such as attorney, staff, other department heads and vendors. That currently is being done now also. The deadline for agenda items to be submitted is 12 noon on Thursday, and that, as I said, we did that just a few weeks ago, and that seems to be working at least well for us now. If not, I guess we can always discuss that too, so that stays the same. Missing the Thursday timeline is not considered an emergency, however, exceptions to the Thursday noon deadline will be made for emergency situations. Very much the same process we have too. The administrative aide will complete the agenda and send a preliminary agenda out on Thursday afternoon to the entire Board, and copy all department heads or elected officials that have submitted items for the agenda. This will allow the department heads and elected officials an opportunity to review their agenda items, and will also allow the Board members an opportunity to ask questions or request additional information. And last, the final agenda will be emailed on Friday afternoon. So, the only thing that's really changing with our procedure is the approvals for agenda requests. And, I know, Tom, I saw your email, and you mentioned it's not just about convenience, and no, it's not, but it's a time, everyone is extremely busy right now, this isn't something new, but not with our typical operations, with ARPA projects, with trying to fill positions, there's so many different things going on. But, the procedure for getting items on the agenda has been somewhat difficult, and it's just been magnified more recently with all the various things going on. So, in, in an effort to try to make better use of our time, and not having to review agenda items, because we have, so, I mean, we review them, I'm sorry, but to approve them, because obviously we've seen situations where the request is made and supervisors miss it, and maybe then it doesn't get approved. Sometimes it goes, or it has to wait for the next week's agenda. Sometimes there have been questions, and when the questions are answered, it's not clear then that the item's been approved. And sometimes, several of us have approved the same item, obviously kind of a waste of our time as well, but because we look at these requests as they come through at different times, it just seems like we don't have a good process in place to just have approval. And so, we have to, we did this way, we wouldn't have to approve them, but we actually see them and have an opportunity to do all the things that we have done now. And they, I guess the time saver I see from department heads and elected officials, for the most part, is they don't have to watch for our approvals, because they're having to pay attention to the emails, just to make sure that it's been approved, and if it hasn't, they usually make a call to Kayla or James, asking, "Is there a question or problem, or is there something that we need to do, or is it going to be approved?" So, again, kind of just taking more time and causing issues that we don't probably need to be concerned about. But, ultimately, like I say, then, we've had some items that missed getting put on an agenda recently and have to be delayed, and that can cause a problem. So, it, it's really just eliminating that small part of the process, and, and the supervisors still have the authority to do any of the things that we normally do, as far as questions and additional information requests, or change our minds, I guess, at a board meeting, if we have the meeting and somebody has a question that hasn't been addressed. So, that, I just wanted input from everyone, this is, like I say, just a draft, things can be changed or altered or whatever.
I've got a question.
Yes.
I didn't quite catch it, or maybe I don't understand it. Did you say that a department head can put something on the agenda and doesn't need approval by the Board?
Yes, yes. It would ultimately be approved by us, I guess, when we see the preliminary agenda, so we can make that decision at that time. Or, you know, we'd do it on Tuesdays, I guess, when we, if we'd have an item on the agenda, and we don't think our questions have been answered, we could certainly pull it.
The problem we've had in the past, and potentially the concern here is, the reason the Board of Supervisors approve it before it goes on the agenda, is before it's actually, when you're talking about Tuesday, well, it's already out in the public and everything. And it could be a sensitive situation, that the Board necessarily doesn't want on the agenda and so forth. And ultimately, the Board of Supervisors are responsible for anything that goes on there, so I personally think that we should keep the process of a board member approving what goes on that agenda, otherwise, it, it's too late once it's posted.
Oh, I agree, Tom.
The other concern that I have that's been going on is, today might be a good example, I don't know if it is, but we got a mixed bag of resolutions and motions and language that week after week we have to correct, and what I've noticed is, departments are taking it upon themselves to submit the language in a, in a form of a resolution or motion, and that's not really their job to do that. If they want a request, that's all they need to do, is send the particular information to Kayla, and Kayla will put it in a proper legal format that she does for the agenda and the Board of Supervisors. Up to now, I've seen requests come in and they put their own language, and sometimes it doesn't make sense, plus it doesn't have the legality part of it covered, so those are two of my concerns there.
Well, to answer your concern about the, something being posted without the Board seeing it, that is what the preliminary will be done for, we will keep that internal process, and that will give everyone an opportunity, those putting items on the agenda, as well as those of us who will be looking at it, to pull items from that, or look at that sensitive information that you feel is out there. It will not go posted without that review.
I just think you're asking for trouble if you're just going to let them, I guess, whatever, I guess.
So, and item number one is what I wanted to discuss, and I must admit, I like where you're going, because I feel like our department heads and our elected officials are in their positions for a reason, they're competent. I think they should be allowed to put stuff on the agenda. We review it. It engages in greater transparency for the operations of this Board, because if it does make it to the meeting on Tuesday, and the majority agrees that we don't discuss it, then we, three of us agree to table it. So, I like these changes, I support these changes, and it actually forces us to do our job in a more engaging manner. My concern was stuff ended up on, stuff did not on the, end up on the agenda before, because any one supervisor would say, "Well, I don't like this being on the agenda," and it would stop right there. And then it would take weeks before we discussed it again. And I'm saying, let's, let's put the business on the floor, let's discuss it openly, and let's make decisions and move on.
The way I've always operated, Dan, is if you put something on the agenda as a county supervisor, I'll say yourself, I would never remove it, because I don't have the authority to do that, and I would expect the respect coming my way the same way. And that's the way I've operated over the years, if another supervisor puts something on the agenda, I would never call the office and tell them to take it off. And that's the principle that a lot of us have worked on over the years. Does, Lynda, did you have any input on this procedures and stuff from the person that actually does the work and is in charge of it, and is responsible for it, Kayla?
Yes, yes, I've talked with Kayla about it, certainly. Well, the process is cumbersome for her as well, as you know, she tries to put those items on the agenda when they haven't been approved, and she highlights them in red to get our attention, to say, "These items haven't been approved. If not approved, I'll remove them. If approved, that's, you know, she'll change it to the same black copy." So, it's, it's in an effort, I guess, to make it a better process for everybody. I'm not guaranteeing it will, Tom. I'd like to try it and see if it doesn't work, and works better for everyone, and if not, like I said, we can certainly do something differently, or we can, you know, amend some of the issues, or address some of those issues. I'm not saying it's a perfect process, just that there's a lot of work involved, and people waiting for approvals, and wondering if they've got an approval or not, and having to come back to us when they don't have, and I even follow up with Kayla myself, and usually say, when I come in on Thursday, "Is there anything we haven't approved yet?" And there usually has been something that someone's missed, so...
I, I agree with you, Lynda, I think you've got some very good points. But the one thing that I want the rest of the Board members to keep in mind, and I think some of you know that, that Board of Agenda is the Board of Supervisors, it's not the other elected officials, and it's not department heads. We're ultimately responsible for what's put on that agenda and comes out in the public section, so therefore, that's why over the years, it's the Board of Supervisors' agenda, and that's it. So, I, I don't have a problem with trying what you're saying. I do have a problem if somebody says that it's everybody's agenda. If you're going to have something like that, you're going to have nothing but chaos eventually, and we're going to be in trouble with some lawsuit or something that shouldn't have ever been on that agenda.
Well, we might have to all pay a little more attention to that preliminary agenda, I agree. You know, we've kind of done the approvals and just assumed that the items have gone on the agenda, maybe we all have a little more responsibility in looking at that preliminary and making sure it's good before it's ever posted Friday.
As a department head, previously, the process you're proposing is the one that was utilized in both city governments before I was elected to the Board.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Would anybody like to make a resolution or motion?
You are.
I can, but I don't need to.
I will. I'll make a, make a motion that we adopt this procedure.
I'll second.
Moving, and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, make this a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Liddell?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is discussion, community services applications.
Well, this is just going to be brief, because it probably won't be much of a discussion, just telling you some thoughts that I'd had. As we all know, we had six applications and six presentations that were done in the last month or so, and we had designated a million, $100,000 for our contributions, we've got requests for over $211,500. And I think everybody's probably familiar with the fact that, you know, when we did, used to use the solid waste fees for grant requests, there was a committee that made a recommendation to the Board, and the Board always had the authority to change the recommendations, or, you know, add additional information or something like that, so nothing changed from the Board being able to make the decision. And then when Solid Waste made the decision that they needed those fees for land purchases and some of their equipment and things like that, and, and did away with the fees for us to use as grant programs, the supervisors continued to support the grant process with taxpayer funds and not fees, until this year, when we learned we had to do contracts for services. So, we still allocated money, as I said, in budget cycle, and I know that's something we probably need to discuss, and it doesn't have to be discussed today too, if we're going to continue to do that during budget cycle and, and have a process in place from a different timeline than we did this year. This year, everything, the changes, I guess, kind of made us have to speed up the process and do something in July, which is something we hadn't done before, but, but right now, it seems like we have no real process in the place for reviewing the, the applications and making sure they're thorough, and making sure, I guess, just that we have vetted them properly. And I know four of them, I think, are ones that we've all funded before, so we're very familiar with the parties, but I, two new ones, and I'm assuming also in the future, just because things will change and more people will be aware of our funding, I'm, I'm assuming that we'll get lots of requests, like other counties have. So, I wondered if it would be good for us, and, and this is just to get your thoughts, and like I said, not that you have to share them today, you might want to think about it, but if, that we should consider some type of criteria, or a matrix, or some type of, even a numerical scoring, or something that we do for the process that makes it more objective, and not be, you know, some of these are friends of ours, some of these are Boards that we serve on, there's a, you know, that all plays into us, obviously voting, and that's going to continue, that, that doesn't remove itself from it. But if there is something that we could do to, I guess, make it a better process, since we, you know, what we do with our own individual contributions, I think we make our own decisions based on whatever we feel like, if we like the people, the organization, the, the mission, and that type of thing, but because we are using taxpayer dollars, it seems to me maybe a process, or a committee, or a group, or maybe it's even staff, I don't, I'm not saying it has to be some, like an external group, but I just thought, someone that would kind of vet the process for us, make sure the information's there, and make recommendations to us, whether it be staff or us, because many times I don't think we even have time to, to go through all the applications and read them and vet them and make sure everything's there. So, it was, you know, like I said, just a, just a point of question, and, and to ask what your thoughts are, and it didn't have to be decided today or determined, or that you had any input on it, I just wanted to get that out there, that I thought with the process in, in place, it would help us in the future, and maybe even with this, this year too, but it could help us as we go forward.
I like the current process, because there's enough people involved outside of us, as elected officials, with the county attorney, and James, and Grant, when they're, when the applications are submitted, and the presentations are given, and we can, we vet them and ultimately take a vote. And the county attorney, assistant county attorney has given us guidance on when we should not be involved in voting on a particular organization that we're involved in, so that was very helpful. I just don't want to make the process too complicated.
Yeah, I agree.
Because I, I like our current process, I think it works.
So, do we get input from James and, and Mike then, I guess, as far as them reviewing them? I mean, I know we're dumping it on them then to actually do the review. them? I mean, I know we're dumping it on them, then, to actually do the review and comments or recommendations or that type of thing, I guess. I'm, I'm fine with anybody doing it. I just want to make sure it's done.
I think from our standpoint, that's, it's a little bit tough, because, I mean, we can put out a recommendation. I know, I know Mike can, you know, he's, he's already looked at the legality side of things, and I can let you know as far as dollars go, but I, I think the, I mean, if, if you're looking for a recommendation, we can get you one, but-
Well, it puts you in a better place, too. I, I don't mean that so much. It's just making sure, I guess, we're vetting the projects. I think I mentioned to Mike, and I don't know that we've talked about it since, that there was one particular of the requests that I wasn't sure was meeting the requirements of the contract for services, and we haven't had a chance to talk about that. I don't know if you've looked at that at all, too. And you all know, I guess, the Board knows, I did five additional questions, and we got back more information. I haven't even gone through all of that yet, but I just thought, I didn't know if you had.
I know, we had a conversation about one of the organizations. I haven't been formally asked to look at any of the applications, but I am aware of your concern. I can look into that. The one thing that I was asked to have input on had to do with conflicts of interest. I think I've spoken to that, I believe adequately. There will be some gray area involved. For example, when you're a member of an organization, but you're not on the Board or you're not a voting decision maker with it, you have to determine whether, whether that passes the smell test, even if it's not a direct conflict. That also came up in a conversation I had with one of the supervisors. But with respect to the organizations, I think five of them clearly meet the, the public purposes that were approved by the Board a number of months back. The other one, I believe, on its face meets it. The question is whether what they're doing advances it, and I think that's a judgment call.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tryon. Anything else from you guys?
You have any thoughts, Greg?
Nope.
Tom, Chris?
I've done it for years. I, I think it works. I, I would, if it was a board I sat on, I wouldn't vote on it. I think you should excuse yourself from that one, because sometimes, sometimes you know too much about that board and how it operates and so.
The thing I would add, Linda, is I know the last five years of the Solid Waste Board that the Board of Supervisors appointed, they adopted a rule, a procedure, that you couldn't apply for funding every year. It was every other year. And that was to help the community further, rather than funding the same ones. I do know in our current list right now, the six, one of them we currently give money to through our community services that we allocate every year. I believe that's about $80,000. So, but I do know Solid Waste went down to every other year for a organization.
Well, and maybe there are things like that in the future we consider or have to, depending on the number of applications we get. I, I don't know, too. I just, I just thought we need, I, I want it to be as equitable as possible. I know we have several that, we have a small group, quite honestly, that applies. We could probably market it more, and then we'd end up with a limited amount of dollars, but just wanted to be sure, I guess, that we're doing what we should for vetting the applicants and their requests. So as it stands right now, we have the six requests. Were there, there were three when you say that's questionable. There, like you said, you said on a board, and so that would be one that Dan won't sort of be able to vote on.
I gave James my feeling, or wrote down the amounts that I thought each one should get, probably two days after we did this, whenever, however long ago it was. Most of them I've had association with, so I know what goes on, and I think we all do, so.
Well, there was one that was new to me, so-
Pardon me?
There was one that was new to me, so any information on that would be helpful.
Yeah. Don't want to discuss it too much, because it's almost, well, it's a duplication of services, some of it.
Did anybody follow up with or, or ask the Public Health Department, too, that was, you know, a recommendation you made the other?
Oh, that, that you asked them, then should follow up with them to see if they could work with them.
Could be a good partner.
And to see if that worked, or, okay.
I'll follow up with Nefisa.
Just to see. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Anything else to come before us? Any information from the Board?
Stay cool.
Pardon me?
Stay cool.
Yeah.
Good luck with that.
It was cooler than-
Yeah. Entertaining a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.